To the 18th of 2020 to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Westminster in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I can take it from here. It's a report from the mayor. So I have a couple of things I'm going to talk about. One thing that I'd like to note, there's a change to our agenda that was discussed, the council president, our city administrator, and we just thought it would be good to have a set place on the agenda to discuss updates and changes that are occurring because of COVID-19. And, you know, this is going to be on our agenda for some time. Every meeting, it's going to be there. And it's a good way for us to give, you know, in addition to the updates we're putting out online and in newsletters, to update the public on changes and pertinent information that are going on in and around the city. So we'll get to, I will save my comments for things that are related to that, for that part of the agenda. The other thing that I'd like to just mention to everybody, and this is very recent, so I haven't even had a chance to discuss it with all of my colleagues in the council yet, but just to let everybody know, I've started the process of working on the city's website. I think we all can agree that the city's website needs some work. And being that, you know, my profession, being in that field, I'm taking upon myself, take some of the burden off of staff to be the point person with our website company. I'll be working with them. But I think, you know, we've talked about it for a while, and especially in a time like this where we want to be able to get information out quickly, you know, we're seeing the benefits of having a better setup for that. So I want to let everybody know that we are working on that. It's going to serve the public better. It's going to serve, it's going to be easier, it's going to take some burden off of our staff in terms of, you know, people requesting information, needing help with forums, that kind of thing. And it's going to be a helpful resource to get information out to the public. I've started, I've discussed this with our city administrator, Ms. Matthews, and I've just recently started to reach out to our department heads to discuss things like, you know, just information they'd like the public to have, you know, be more readily available to the public, things like that. We want to make this a big upgrade, and I just wanted to let everybody know what was happening. So if anybody has any feedback, or if any questions, or they'd like to have some input on it, feel free to reach out to me at any point. And I'll be, again, I'll just be running up on that, but I'll be working with our directors and Ms. Matthews and all of you to get that taken care of. One other thing I'd like to do is just, I'd like to thank the other mayors, and specifically in Carroll County, but also throughout the state. I've been in contact with the other seven mayors of Carroll County almost daily through this entire thing, you know, since the COVID updates, you know, since we realized this was going to be a serious thing, and we had to start making adjustments. And it's been helpful to discuss it with some other peers and people that have been around for a while, and just, and share information on how other cities and towns are handling this. There is also an email thread, you know, that we're talking every couple of days with every mayor in the state. And it's good, you know, we all don't have to reinvent the wheel. If someone has a good idea, or if they put something in place that's helpful, it's, you know, there's a lot of information sharing right now, and I think it's a very good thing. And I'd just like to thank, you know, thank all of them for doing it. They're too many to name now, but I'd just like to thank them publicly for that. Actually, I'm having a Zoom meeting tomorrow night around this time with the Carroll County mayors to just discuss what's going on and how we can help each other. But I will move into, you know, I saved the stuff that I was going to talk about related to COVID-19, since we have a new agenda item for that, and I'll use that as the segue into that section of the agenda, if that's okay with you, Mr. President, it's your meeting.
Please do, Mr. Mayor.
So, well, so first of all, you know, I already mentioned that we discussed adding this new section, and I think this is a good thing to have on the agenda. And one of the reasons is, you know, so we don't have to amend the agenda if new information or something new has to occur because of COVID-19. If something is, you know, the day or two before the meeting, we don't have to amend the agenda to put something in there to discuss it. I think it's a good thing to be in there, and this is our first meeting, having it, I think it's a good thing. I'd like to discuss a few things that are going on. There's been some spirited discussion among elected officials and some residents and some staff regarding trash pickup schedule. There's also, I think, some clarification needed, just because when some information gets put out, you know, when people start to talk about it, sometimes all the information isn't translated. So I wanted to just discuss that a little bit, you know, in this section. Essentially, when all of this started to occur, you know, a few weeks ago, we talked to our department heads, our city administrator, and we had to make a lot of decisions quickly. And we, after talking to them and having to make changes to work schedules and staffing, you know, speaking with Mr. Glass of our Public Works Department and Ms. Matthews, you know, we decided that out of all the things that we have to do on a short staff, if we had to do anything, we would pull back on bulk trash. And we did so, knowing that it would be temporary, and then it would be reevaluated once we got into things and we saw how staff would be affected and schedule would be affected. But that only pertains to, you know, grass clippings, yard waste, and the larger bulk trash items, you know, the large items that would be scheduled anyway for pickup that does not include, you know, regular trash and recycling that's still being picked up every week. No one has to worry about that. And, you know, I just, I wanted to talk about that, and I wanted to give a minute. If Mr. Glass is available, I'll give him a second to unmute his mic if he's here. I just wanted to ask him, you know, some of the conversations I think we may have had with him individually, to give him a minute here to kind of discuss, you know, why we did it, what's going on with the staff that made us, you know, have to make some prioritization within Public Works and the Street Department. But also, if he has anything to say about, you know, if we tried to do everything, what would get, I guess, left out? If we tried to prioritize everything, what would happen and what might not get done? Mr. Glass, are you on and available to speak?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
If you'd like to take a minute, you know, explain some of those things. I know we kind of, you know, you sent an email to us, but if you take a second and just kind of explain why we did it and what other things, you know, we might not get to if we tried to do everything while our staffing situation is affected by the COVID-19.
Sure. So as you know, it's not just the Street Department, but every department has been split at least in half so that the concept, or thought at least, was so that if we were going to get sick, not everybody would be sick at the same time. So specifically to the Street Department, and I know I probably sound like a broken record here, but we are short-staffed to start. So when we split that staff by 50%, it's already short. It doesn't take a mathematician to know that we're not going to get everything done that we could do on a regular basis. Now, in my email report that I gave, feels like that was a few weeks ago now, I mentioned that, you know, is that the kind of thing that we could continue those services? I can rest assured that we will do the best that we can. Can we pick up the bulk items and grass clippings? I think the grass clippings are the biggest issue right now. We absolutely can do that, but the issue is that something else is going to suffer. Right now, as everybody knows, I'm sure we've all experienced the rapid growth of the lawns and grasses in the parks and at home as well. So we are struggling as we speak just to keep up with that, believe it or not. So we have our own ordinance even to prevent the grass from, in the six-inch length in the first place. So, you know, just having the rains that we've had recently, believe it or not, that puts us behind there. Other things that we have to do are, you know, clearing the street baskets, for instance, that kind of thing. You don't get a chance, you don't get a reprieve from that because, you know, you miss that even two days, and the trash is piled up, and et cetera, et cetera. Some things we don't know what's going to happen, but I can tell you that the Street Department in particular, if whatever the task is, if it doesn't fit neatly in someone else's lane, it becomes a function of the Street Department, which it might not necessarily fit in their lane either, but that's just the way life turns out. A perfect example of that was the work that we put into the potential of using the armory for the COVID respite. Turned out that we didn't have to do any of that, but there still was preparation work, and there was the planning and thought of how all that stuff was going to be put together. And then ultimately, that was, those plans got changed, I think probably for a better means as well. But it's that kind of thing that we have to respond to emergencies. We're not the police department, but in the event that storm-related stuff or, you know, bomb threats, all that kind of thing, the Street Department is all a major player in that. I guess, again, and to close, just to understand that, you know, we can do the best that we can do, that would be, whatever your direction is, if we're supposed to take care of the grass clippings, we can certainly do that, but please understand that something else has to give. Then I guess I should mention this, too. Currently, we're in Plan B, and Plan B is to have the split departments, as I mentioned earlier. Plan C is even more extreme than that. If we get to Plan C, we will not be able to do the bulk pickup at all in Plan C. So I think what makes sense to me, and I've suggested this, is that at the, hopefully the end of the month is when we're going to peak in this area, but I would suggest that we wait until the area peaks before we would make any decision on that, although it's easy for me to say because I'm not the one that makes that decision, you guys are. So I guess unless there are questions, that's all I had to say.
Mr. President, is this a time for us to respond and ask questions, or shall we wait till the mayor's finished with everything regarding the updates of COVID-19?
I'm finished.
I'm finished, but I know Ms. Matthews has some things to say. So if we'd like to let, like, you know, kind of the report play out, and then, you know, whatever President Pacrera wants to do from there, but that way, if anyone does want to respond or discuss it, if that's something we're going to do, then she can, you'll have everything.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's best. Let's proceed with the rest of the report, then we can take questions.
All right, Ms. Matthews, I'm finished.
Thank you all. As I mentioned at the last mayor and common council meeting, our planning horizon at that time was through the end of April. Since our last meeting, we've gone ahead and extended that horizon through the end of May. And what that means is that all rentals of city facilities, all previously approved special event permits have been canceled. On the city side, those special events include our Flower and Jazz Festival, which was scheduled for May 9, and that has been canceled. Additionally, I did want to share with any community members who were participating in the meeting that the American Legion has made the decision not to hold its Memorial Day parade this year. We are continuing to see how the situation develops. We have a decision to make within the next couple of weeks, as I've discussed with the mayor and council president earlier today. We will be making the call in about 10 days whether or not to cancel the beer and barbecue stroll that is scheduled for later in the month of June, but we have to make a decision by May 1 or risk some financial losses. So certainly, I'll be working with staff, particularly Ms. Mullendor and Ms. Gruber's absence, and working with the mayor and council president as that timeline approaches. So that's sort of the status of where things are. Be happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
All right, we'll take some questions. Ms. Thomas, Ms. Gilbert, rather, would you like to begin?
Yes, I know, I know for a couple of weeks, I've been kind of sending emails back and forth to my colleagues because I personally am not in favor of the bulk trash or grass clipping collection altogether. I understand that the decision was made, made quickly, and we needed to do that, and I really do understand that, but I would like to revisit the, because I do not think that if this is, if this is going to suspend all the way through May, like all the rest of the activities, it is not going to be a, it's going to become a safety issue. I've taken at least 17 pictures of trash, bulk trash, grass clippings, everything sitting out within two alleys as of this afternoon at 4:30. And they are, it is getting to be a very big concern, and I do not see why we can't maybe go back. I understand we can't go back to the normal schedule, but at least improvise or alter the schedule temporarily while we're in COVID-19 and see if that's a possibility. I did send out an email saying that I was wondering whether biweekly grass pickup and maybe quarterly bulk trash pickup would be acceptable. So I at least would like to see a discussion on that.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak at this time?
So, Mr. President, I'd like to.
Mr. Cavaci.
So what I guess I want to understand, and I guess this is as good a time as any to talk about it, it isn't necessarily directly related to the bulk trash issue, but I'm a little, I guess what I need to, I'd like to get some clarity on is, in his comments, Mr. Glass talked about Plan B. And I know that had also been referred to in some emails and things in terms of splitting our workforce to make sure that we aren't, you know, exposing employees to each other necessarily as much, and we make sure that we aren't getting the entire city staff, you know, all at one time coming down with the COVID. But I guess where I'm, I'd like some clarity, and I don't know, this is probably more directed at Ms. Matthews than it is Mr. Glass, because I think it pertains to more departments than just Public Works. I guess my understanding is that an employee works 40 hours a week, on average, I believe, most of, full-time employee. It's a 40-hour position. So if we are splitting the work so that a 40-hour employee is not working at the exact same time as other 40-hour employees, are we splitting that and then having those employees only work 20 hours a week? Are they, have they gone part-time so that we don't have the total, you know, accumulated number of hours of the entire staff available on a weekly basis? Are they working different times of the day? And are all actually still putting in 40 hours a week? So I'd like some clarity on that, because I'm just not completely clear exactly where those hours are going. But, you know, I understand that we did have some things in terms of Public Works needed to do that were outside of the normal, you know, our regular day-to-day operations, like coordinating off the parks early on. I know that, like you said, there was a little prep work that went into, you know, potentially getting ready for the old armory. But outside of that, I guess I'm just struggling a little bit to understand what, where those hours are. So maybe we could get some explanation on that, it would probably help us.
Sure, I'd be happy to answer that. I think, as you all know, we've had a, most of our administrative staff has transitioned to teleworking. When I look back a couple, almost a month ago, Mr. Glass and I talked about how to best ensure the health of our employees in his department, as well as ensure business continuity, particularly for mission-critical services. Mr. Glass alluded earlier in his remarks to a Plan B, and that was one of three options that Mr. Glass and I discussed. Plan A was that we continue working staff in public work as we normally would, and I think both Mr. Glass and I quickly came to the conclusion that that was not the best way to proceed. Plan B, which involves splitting the crews, and in response specifically, Councilmember Cavaci, to your question, what that means is, in all of Mr. Glass's, most of Mr. Glass's various divisions of his department, including the Street Department, they will work seven days on and seven days off. And basically, for the week that they are off, those employees are not performing work, they are on administrative leave. This has been a fairly common practice among Public Works employees and talking to my colleagues throughout the state, and the intent is to try to keep our employees as healthy as possible. Many of you have visited the Public Works facilities, they work in fairly close quarters, and our concern was that if one of the employees came down with COVID-19, that it would likely spread very quickly among the workforce in those type of conditions. So our thinking was that by splitting the crews, once again, with one crew working 40, you know, seven days straight, and then alternating with the other half of their staffing, that that was the best chance we had to preserve the health of our employees and to make sure we were positioned as this pandemic continues, that we had adequate staffing to perform any mission-critical services. So what that means in practical terms is that in any given week, the Street Department has half the staffing that it would normally have.
And, Ms. Matthews, how many would be working on the seven-day on? Like, is that 10 people, five people? How many employees that?
In the, in the Street Department, Councilmember Gilbert? Specifically?
Yeah, well, who would be responsible for, say, bulk trash or grass clipping pickup or any of those responsibilities? Yes, the Street.
Mr. Glass may have to help me, but I believe the Street Department, Mr. Glass has approximately 25 employees, is that correct? Somewhere between 20 and 25, I don't remember the exact number.
So is that 25 split in half, or 25 that's?
Yes.
20, so basically?
No.
It's 12 and 12.
It would be anywhere from about 10 to, yeah, 12 and 12, if my 20 to 25 at full staffing is accurate. And Mr. Glass, once again, could best respond to that.
Yes, it's, I think, 22.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Mr. Cavaci.
Okay, so Ms. Matthews, again, back to the hours. So if I do my math correct, I guess what you're saying is, is that in a normal two-week work week, and an employee working eight hours a day, five days a week, 40 hours per week, if you take that and amortize that over a two-week period, that means each employee is working 80 hours every two weeks, correct?
That is correct.
So what we've done effectively is we've cut that down now to each employee's working 56 hours in a two-week period versus those 80 hours in a two-week period. Is that accurate?
And within the case of the Street Department, since that's a specific discussion, they would actually be working 40, because generally, they are not scheduled to work Saturday or Sunday. I believe, like, for the water and sewer plant, they are working on every, you know, every other week, on average, I think about 44 hours, because they actually obviously have a 24/7 operation.
Okay, so a normal employee works 40 hours a week every week, correct?
Yeah.
But now, but now that we've gone to this split schedule of seven on, seven off, assuming they're still working eight-hour days, that means, again, in a two-week period, we've effectively gone from 80 hours per, every two weeks of work produced, to 56 hours every two weeks of work produced, excluding the 44-hour employees, so I assume it's the same ratio if it's seven and seven. Is that accurate?
No.
And I'm going to, I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilmember Gilbert, I apologize.
Ms. Matthews, each worker is still working 80 hours a week. It's just they're just working at seven days a week instead of five.
Well, that means they're working 11 hours every day, then? If they're working 80 hours every two weeks.
Yeah, I apologize.
Good, sorry.
Yeah, I apologize if I was unclear. No, in any biweekly pay period, customarily, a Street Department employee would be working 80 hours over a two-week period. They are currently working 40 hours in a two-week period, because they're working 40 hours one week, right.
So it's even less than 56. So we've cut our employees' production literally in half.
That is accurate in the Street Department.
Okay. Well, there's the answer to the question that I couldn't figure out for the past week, on where that time went. I, 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 okay, thank you. You have answered my question. Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions at this time? Or comments?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Mr. Deha.
I wonder what is the plan for the bulk trash and the yard clippings that are accumulating in the, in the community? I'll let any, Ms. Matthews can answer that, or Mr. Glass can answer that, or perhaps the mayor or the council president.
And I also, is there, is there a?
I'm sorry, could we wait and do, what purely recognized, we'll do one thing at a time? Thank you.
Sorry.
Mr. Glass can certainly add to this. At this time, we do not have any plans to pick up those items. As he indicated, obviously, we will do whatever the mayor and common council direct. Jeff, is there anything you'd like to add?
Certainly, the first plan was to try to get the word out to the residents that were placing the items out, just so that they knew we weren't going to pick it up and, under the circumstances, and that, you know, especially bulk items, if they could be held back until such time that this gets figured out, hopefully within the next few weeks. Unfortunately, that, our ability to reach every person is somewhat stymied just by the tools that we have. For instance, that's just the website, social media, and then there was a system of tags that we were using as well, that I think in, in at least some cases, were mistaken for a notice of violation. So we put the tags out to let them know, obviously, that, again, that whatever was set out was not going to be picked up. Those words were written on the tags, but again, not, matter of fact, few people take the time to read something like that. So I'm not sure if that really was how effective that was, or in some cases, I believe it may have backfired as well. We will be prepared, obviously, with putting the full crew on, once the, in the next few weeks, I'm hoping at least, but once this thing's over with, to the point that we can resume normal breathing, then we'll have everything picked up within a certain, probably one-week period, because, you know, it'll be all hands on deck at that point.
All right, thank you, Mr. Glass. Ms. Gilbert?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. One is, so we're paying our Street Department folks full-time pay of 80 hours every two weeks for 54-hour work, is that correct?
We are compensating them for 80 hours for 40 hours of work performed in the Street Department. As I've mentioned, it's going to vary, the water and sewer plants are on a different schedule, but specifically with regard to the Street Department, they are being paid 80 hours for 40 hours of work.
Okay.
We are tracking the administrative leave time because it may be reimbursable under, you know, emergency management protocols, so we are tracking the time separately.
So I understand, everybody, I mean, 80% of the world went to teleworking, and we all have had to adjust hugely, not only with the way we're working, but with the creativity of how we're working, even when we are working. Did anybody think about having all of the workers that are currently working with our split shift, working longer shifts, instead of eight hours, working 10 hours? Because if you work, every single worker, 10 hours for seven days, you're 77 hours, and we'd be far more efficient with the money that we have and the usage of that time, and probably could get the work done that we need done. I'm just asking that and putting it out there, that seems a far more efficient way of doing this than paying people. this than, than paying people eighty hours a week for fifty-four hours worth of work, and then our services that our taxpayers are paying for is not a happening for them. So I, I don't, I, I'm sorry, I just don't understand this.
Mr. Glass can certainly address some of the operational issues. Um, it's not a straight dollar-for-dollar savings, because under federal labor laws, we would have to pay overtime for any, any hours worked in excess of forty in a seven-day period. So there would certainly be, I'm sorry, there would certainly be some savings, but that is federal labor law that we'd have to pay overtime for anything worked over forty.
Is that not, though, because we're in a COVID-19 pandemic? Would that not be excused? I can't believe that the hospitals and the nurses and, and everybody else out there working extra hours and extra shifts. I, I understand they're probably getting compensated, but, but I, I'm, I'm just a little, I'm, I'm a little lost in, in, in trying to creatively come up with a solution for this.
Ms. Childs and I have been, um, there's obviously been a lot of response, both at the federal and state level, in terms of new leave provisions due to the pandemic. Um, to the best of my knowledge, and like I say, I get updates every single day, as does Ms. Childs, there has been no amendment to the Fair Labor Standards Act, which is the federal law that governs overtime pay. Um, once again, I think, Mr. Glass, I don't know if you want to weigh in in terms of any thoughts you had about, um, an alternative work schedule such as that proposed by Councilmember Gilbert.
Uh, that was not a consideration early on. If that gets worked out about the, uh, the, uh, and I have to agree, that seems a little crazy about the overtime, but that is the case. We, uh, we did run into that in a different department. Um, that, that's something that we, you know, could consider, absolutely.
Mr. President.
Carrero. Uh, was that, did I hear the mayor and Mr. Deha?
Mr. Deha.
All right, let me, let me recognize the mayor first and then Mr. Deha.
Sure. So ju- just to, I, I think it's important to, to look at what our options are and not, not compare this to what we were doing a month ago or two months ago. Um, in, in, in these are, these are my opinion, I'm, I'm basing them as much as I can on facts, is that when we made these cuts to split the workforce in half, um, is to ensure continuity. Because if we have, um, you know, someone, someone's infected and the entire Street Department, who, who's on a single shift, um, all get sick, and they all have to either, you know, be taking, you know, take care of themselves or being quarantined, every one of those services that Mr. Glass mentioned earlier stops. Um, I doubt, I doubt, uh, Mr. Glass and, um, and his deputy, uh, Mr. Dick are going to be able to, uh, pick up, pick up all the slack for the entire Street Department to be out. So I think that no matter how you cut this, and we know people are going to get sick, uh, we know that a high percentage of people are going to catch this, and even if they don't get very sick, they're going to need to quarantine. Um, we are going to be short-staffed in Public Works, um, in, in every department, in the street, in streets, no matter what. It's, I guess it, it, what, what we can do is either keep it from taking out the whole department, or just know that that's going to happen at some point, um, and, and then get ready for that. But either way, we're going to be short-staffed. This is, this is, it's, it's, it's not that different from when you see the graphs of flattening the curve. You take measures now, um, that are going to slow things down, um, and make things a little uncomfortable, so that it doesn't get even worse in the future. And, and to me, we have a decision to make, um, between those two options, not, can we go back to normal? So we, we have to do that. It's not, I mean, there aren't, there aren't a whole lot of great answers here, there aren't a whole lot of great solutions. I, I don't think we have a list of really good options here. We're doing the best we can, and, um, and, you know, we, and we, we want to protect our staff, but we also need to protect continuity of government. And if we, if our entire Street Department gets sick, um, because, because they're all in the same, you know, working quarters, they're all, they're all sharing spaces, uh, at the same time, that's going to cause even bigger problems. It's not just going to be bulk trash, it's going to be bulk trash plus a lot of other things. And I think we need to be careful, uh, and cautious with that. I also think, um, you know, and, and we're not the only ones doing this, the county's doing this, the sheriff's doing this. Luckily, you know, a lot of other, other Public Works, you know, other departments, especially mission-critical ones like police, they're already in shifts, so you don't have, you don't have the entire department together at once, um, like you do in, in certain other departments. So while they have to be out there, it's mission-critical, at least, you know, that, if, 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 if a, if one shift came down with this, um, you know, worse than others, we could make adjustments to make sure that we have continuity. And, um, and, you know, we, we have, we do have the help of Sheriff's Department if need be, but, um, you know, with, with, with Streets Department, um, and without knowing how long this is really going to last, we have to be, I think we have to be cautious with this. That being said, I also think we need to reevaluate this and all the other decisions we've made, you know, every week or two, and as, as things change, or as new information comes, you know, comes to light, or we see how effective or ineffective our decisions are, we adjust them. I don't think, um, I don't think anyone has said, you know, bulk trash is done, you know, you know, for three months or two months. I think it's, I think it's, out of all the priorities that Street Department had, that had, that was, you know, one of, if not the lowest. And as things, as we see things change, as we get some experience operating under, um, you know, this, this new situation, um, you know, I'm confident Mr. Glass would tell us that, um, you know, he's, he's going to advise us on what he thinks we should do, and we're going to take his advice and make our, make our decision. But I think if it got to a point where he thought we could get, uh, bulk trash sooner than we expected, um, we would do that. And, and also, to the same, to the same effect, if we had, if we have a situation that didn't start out that bad, and it, it started to get bad, it would, it would be, it would work its way up the priority list. So if we had a bulk trash situation that just, you know, uh, really, really took hold and it became a real problem, we would address it, um, as, as the problem grew. But I, I think, I think right now, it just comes down to prioritizing what's most important to what's the least important. And if, if bulk trash wasn't important, we wouldn't, we wouldn't do it normally. But, um, I, I think compared to some of the other things that we could be risking, Mr. Glass mentioned earlier, I think, you know, I think this was the right, the right call. Obviously, we're going to have further discussion about this. Clearly, we don't, we don't agree, um, all of us, but, I, I mean, I, I just wanted to, I, I don't know, I wanted to take a minute to lay out how I'm looking at this, um, in case that, in case that changes anyone's mind, or, or, or maybe, you know, we have discussions about this over the coming weeks, um, you know, we can discuss those things. But I just wanted to let everyone know what my point of view was and why, why we're doing that. Um, and, and I think that's it, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Deha, before I recognize you, uh, let me just suggest that, um, I think that, um, it's, it's clear that, that, you know, we'd like to see, um, a different resolution to this. And I think, you know, one of the ideas that occurs to me is that there might be, uh, some alternative shifts that might be developed, and I think that, you know, perhaps we might ask Ms. Matthews and Mr. Glass and, um, Ms. Childs to go back and take a look at what some alternatives are to the current, uh, seven days on, seven days off. There might be some alternatives that might, you know, fit within, uh, labor laws, and at the same time, be able to get, you know, more, uh, more hours out of the workforce. That might be, you know, a way to, uh, you get more manpower, you know, out there to do some of these things that, um, you know, we, we might, you know, have wanted to, uh, to wait on for a little bit. There's an opportunity, now that we're a few weeks into this, as the mayor said, to begin reevaluating some of the things we've done. And, you know, that to me seems like, you know, the most fertile ground to take a look at.
Um, Mr. President?
Uh, no, I promise, sorry, I promised Mr. Deha.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Deha.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I believe that the bulk trash and the yard waste pickup i- is, is mission-critical. And, um, I believe that, um, knowing the Street Department as well as I do, I believe that if it's a consensus of council, that we, um, we ask them to develop an alternative plan. I didn't really hear a clear answer as to what we're going to do with all the accumulated, um, bulk trash and yard waste that's currently out there, and I believe that is increasingly a public safety issue. Um, as far as the overtime is concerned, uh, that, that could possibly, that probably will be reimbursable under pandemic funds that will be available in the future. I really feel strongly that, um, that we should, uh, come up with an alternative plan than the current one. Um, I know, Mr. President, you and I discussed, uh, back on, uh, April the third, that we would discontinue the notification process, because that has been uni-, that has been universally accepted, uh, not accepted well at all. Um, I have, uh, the one good side about all of this is I've had the opportunity to speak with a lot of citizens, um, who are universally unhappy about this. Uh, folks are very pleasant about it, they've been very friendly about it. I haven't really met anybody that's liked the notification process. I think if you want to continue the notification process, it needs to be revamped. Um, and I think there needs to be some sort of narrative, so that we can explain to folks that, um, maybe they could hold back a little bit on bulk trash and yard waste. But I, I, Mr. President, I believe we have a consensus of council that we want another plan. I really want the bulk trash and the yard waste, uh, picked up. I understand that we may not be able to do it at the same level as we did before this, but I think I want the Street Department to, uh, put their collective and creative heads together and come up with a different plan. Um, I, I think this is really important, and I, I believe that I would have the support of my colleagues, or, or maybe not, maybe we could ask for a consensus, where if necessary, Mr. President, I would be happy to make a motion that we change it.
Mr. President.
Mr. Yingling.
So, as Chair of the Public Works Department, or, no, I'm sorry, not of the Department, of the committee, uh, I've had length discussions about this with all of you. And I would like to point out a couple things. We are in a national emergency. This is a dangerous pandemic, that we don't know how it's going to impact our city from day to day, and we're planning for the absolute worst-case scenario. The safety of our employees is the top priority in this regard. And the continuity of essential services, such as running water, functioning sewer systems, you know, we had storms come through yesterday that could have done massive damage to our city. Thank goodness they, it did not. But I think that we're being told by the experts who we rely on to run our city, that this is what needs to be done. And as the Chair of the Public Works, and my position is, we need to listen to them. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Yingling. Thank you. Why don't we leave this right there for now? Um, I think that we've, um, we've given, you, I, I think we've given the staff enough to, to, of a message here, that, um, they should take a look at, um, you know, how we can, you know, perhaps rework the schedules, and still, I agree with Mr. Yingling, you know, keep our employees safe. I think that's going to be a priority right now. Um, and, you know, one of the concerns I have is that I don't see how you do pickup of bulk items without getting too close to other people, you know, to, uh, you know, closer than the CDC guidelines are. So, so let's ask them to take a look at that, think about that, and see how we might be able to proceed, but I'm, I'm hesitant to, um, uh, to give any, any firm order here, because I think we need to let them come back to us with, uh, with their best suggestions on how we might move forward on this. That make sense to everybody?
So will they be returning back to us with, um, after brainstorming and some suggestions by the, by our next council meeting, or is there
By, or? I, I think before the, I think we won't wait till the next council meeting, they'll be back to us before then.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Mr. Deha.
So you're suggesting that maybe they will come back to us, um, in a couple of days with an alternative plan that will ensure the safety of the employees, but nevertheless, take a look at the bulk trash and the yard waste that has accumulated in Westminster?
That's right.
Okay. I'll accept that.
Okay.
Mr. President.
As, as well as an alternative schedule, possibly?
Well, I think that's, that would have to be part of the solution.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'd, I'd just like to make sure that, um, the plan, and I'm guessing when you say they, we're, we're talking about, uh, Mr. Glass and, um, and, and, you know, his superintendents of, uh, uh, and, and management in the Street Department. I just, I just want to make sure we know what we're giving up. You know, if, um, if we're, if we're going to do that, I'd, I'd also like that, that report to tell us, um, what we won't be able to do. I just want to make sure that whatever we decide, and what additional risks there are going to be. Um, you know, I think we just need to make a really informed decision on this.
Yes, I think that's right. I mean, you know, I think we want to, we want their recommendation, and then we can, uh, take a look at that and, uh, you know, give them some feedback on how we want to move forward.
Mr. President.
Mr. Deha.
I think we're selling the Street Department short. I think that they, I think that, uh, I think that they can come up with an alternative plan that ensures their safety and, uh, takes a look at, uh, maybe, uh, some sort of, um, uh, truncated plan, uh, to pick up what yard waste and what bulk trash is out there right now. Meanwhile, um, maybe with the help of the media or a different, uh, program, we can let people know that it's not, it's not a good idea to be developing a lot of bulk trash and yard waste at this point in time. Um, maybe we could do it at a, at a, at a, at a different level than we've done it so comprehensively in the past, but knowing the Street Department is creative as they are and as hard-working as they are, I think they can do it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Deha.
President.
And, Mr. Yingling.
I'd just like to remind you that the Street Department is operating at a significant reduced capacity, and I know that that's probably putting a lot of stress on, uh, the department heads and Mr. Glass, and I don't think that this is a valuable, you know, um, use of their time right now. The experts have spoken, it's about safety, you know, and it's about continuity of city services. So while I feel for our citizens, and of course, we're going to evaluate everything, whether it's Public Works, police, um, you know, among all the other departments, we're going to evaluate it constantly, you know, to lessen the burden that this virus has caused. I, I just, I don't agree with this direction. So that's all I got to say about that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Yingling. And I think with
Um, Mr. Pecoraro, you're muted, I'm not hearing you.
But thank you, I'm sorry about that. I said, I think with that, we've covered this topic pretty thoroughly, and, uh, perhaps we can move on to, uh, the next, uh, part of the agenda. And that would be reports from standing committees. Uh, Mr. Deha, anything you'd like to report from the Arts Council?
Yes, I do have a brief report, and I also really appreciate, and, um, all the points of view that we've heard, and I, I really have a great deal of respect for the other points of view. I'm just really happy that we've had the opportunity to talk about this, um, because I do believe it, it's a critical service. Um, the Arts Council, the Arts Council's been working really hard to address, um, uh, the public health emergency in a responsible manner. Um, they have, um, canceled their programming in April. Um, they have done something that I'm really happy that the mayor's working on, uh, they revamped their website. I'm looking forward to our website also being revamped. They have revamped their website. Um, so if you, uh, find the opportunity to go to the, um, the Carroll Arts Council website, I think you're going to be very pleasantly pleased, uh, with the results. It's, it's at, um, all one word, carrollcountyartscouncil.org is the new, um, uh, website. Um, so, uh, over the years, they've expanded their programming, uh, the website was done at quite a number of years ago, and, uh, I think everybody will please, be pleased with, uh, the new website. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Deha. Economic and Community Development, Mr. Yingling.
Um, yeah, just real quick, I, I'd like to first say that, um, I feel for all those businesses out there who are struggling right now, uh, you know, our restaurants, our retail, um, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm here, I'm feeling that with you. Uh, I want to also thank some local organizations, uh, the Carroll County Chamber of Commerce, um, the Small Business Development Center, the Carroll Technology Council, uh, Carroll County Economic Development, um, they have been, in my opinion, a tremendous resource in pushing out, uh, information specifically relating to some of the federal loan programs, the state loan programs. And, uh, I'd also like to thank just kind of the state of Maryland, our, our governor, um, and what, I was on a conference call today, uh, for the Maryland Chamber of Commerce with Senator Carden and Van Hollen, and they referred to, uh, Maryland as kind of Team Maryland, you know? And I, I really, I'm happy to see kind of that and that come together, because we have to look out for our, our business community, and I know they're struggling. So as, um, you know, Economic and Community Development Chair, I just wanted to make it known, uh, that I'm, I'm thinking about you, and I know that all the other council members And I know that all the other council members are, are thinking about you as well. So that's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Yingling. For the Finance Committee, just report that we are still engaged in working on the budget with the staff. Couple of things I would, I would want to note as part of that, that the income tax proceeds are about 12% of the city's general fund budget. That's a significant portion there, and I think we all can appreciate how that's going to be impacted by the current crisis in terms of, you know, the impact on, on people living in the city. So we will see an impact on our revenues going forward, you know, and that's something we're going to have to take into account for the budget. We are, we've had to slow down the process a little bit in order to give the staff the time to take a look at what the new projections will be like and, you know, rework some things there. The Finance Committee is meeting on Friday, and we will be discussing with the staff where we stand now. We will be getting back to you then shortly. Of course, as you all know, tonight, instead of a regular council meeting was, was to, was to have been a budget workshop, we'll still, we'll be rescheduling that, so we'll have a chance for a presentation on the budget and the opportunity to, for everybody to, to go forward in terms of how we want to, how we want to plan the city's budget for the coming year. We did instruct the staff, I will point out, that the tax rate will remain unchanged. We're not, certainly not going to be raising taxes at this time. And not that we had any plans to do so anyway, but certainly not in the midst of this. So we will be back to you with a report on, on where we're going very shortly. And with that, we will turn to the Personnel Committee. Ms. Gilbert, anything from you?
No, nothing other than a huge shout out to our Chief of Police, Chief Ledwell, Mr. Glass, and all of our directors. The last several weeks have been challenging for all of us, and I just wanted to say thank you to all of them for doing everything and going above and beyond and trying to keep what we, what we're doing and, and our services as much as possible together and, in the future, trying to amend them so that we do have the continuity of services. I just want to say thank you to all of them.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gilbert. And Public Safety, Mr. Cavaci.
Yeah, Mr. President, thank you. I've got a handful of things here. Number one, I think may, maybe most importantly, is Part One crime, crime overall, is down and has continued to be down when we look at it year over year for this period of time compared to last year. It has, it is down, and Part One crime as well, the serious crime is, is down pretty significantly. I think that is certainly partly due to the fact that, you know, people are not out and not as active, but we've been seeing that trend for a number of years now, for quite a few years. We've been seeing Part One crime continue to trend down year over year for, for quite a few years, and that's a testament to the incredibly fantastic job that our police officers do and the chief does, leading the police department. And I know we're all very grateful for that. You know, the chief made pretty significant changes in terms of the scheduling and work shifts, who's on, who's off, data-driven. We talked a little bit about that at the last meeting. That's still continuing to produce great results. It's also very fortuitous timing because of some of the things that actually we were referring to a little earlier in our discussions related to the Public Works Department. The police department had made these changes prior to any, any of this occurring, and I think it's really boded well for them where they're able to have these folks working in, in, in different shifts at different times, and it, and it just happens to have worked out phenomenally well, given our current circumstances. I wanted to touch on take-home cars. It dawned on me a couple of weeks ago that not all of our police officers had take-home cars due to our policy of, I believe it was a 25-mile radius that the police officer had to live within, which I think we all agreed was reasonable. But in this time, this critical time where we need police officers to be able to be responsive as things might crop up, coupled with the fact that some of the police officers were changing cars as they changed shifts, so they would pull their gear out of their police vehicle, have to take their gear, put it in their POV, their personally-owned vehicle, and then take that home, and if there was contamination, they were bringing that into their own personal vehicles. You would have police officers potentially sharing cars. So I suggested to, to the mayor and to my colleagues that we take a look at that and maybe allow the, all police officers, because we had enough, all police officers, no matter where they live, to be able to take on their vehicles. I'd like to thank all of you for your agreeance to that and allowing the chief to go ahead and start the, change the take-home car policy so that now all of our police officers take a car home every day, so we don't have that cross-contamination. They have a marked emergency vehicle or an unmarked vehicle with emergency equipment so that they can get back to the city if we need them in a critical situation, certainly much faster than they could trying to bring a POV back and then getting in their patrol car to get out and do whatever we need them to do. So one, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, my colleagues on the council for allowing that change to be made, and I think our police officers have heard, I've heard some very positive feedback about that. So I think it was a, I think it was a good move. The last thing I wanted to touch on in this report is the unfortunate incident where we had a police-involved shooting. I don't need to go into great detail as to what happened. I think everyone's been able to read about that, but I just wanted to point out that, you know, the Maryland State Police, as per our agreement, anytime there's a police-involved shooting, they come in, they take complete control of the situation on scene. They were actually out there almost immediately and took control of the scene. I happened to go out just to check very briefly, and they were already in charge. They had troopers there. They do the investigation, and then they forward a report onto the state's attorney's office. Based on that report, the state's attorney then makes a determination as to the justification or lack thereof of the police-involved shooting, and there was absolutely zero question on the state's attorney's part as to whether that was a justified shooting or not, and it absolutely was a justified shooting. There, there are never good things. We're always very sad when something like that happens, but it is reassuring to know that our police officers acted prudently and in a justified manner. So I just wanted to make sure that we point that out. That's all I have, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cavaci. And Public Works Committee, Mr. Yingling, anything else you'd like to add?
No, I think my position's clear, nothing else. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Recreation and Parks Committee. Recreation and Parks, Mr. Deha.
I was hoping that while we don't have a lot of folks in the, at the family center, that we could take a good look at some of the, the repairs and some of the maintenance that needs to be done over at the family center. I think this would be a great opportunity to get that accomplished, and I guess I've lost track of where it is that we, we are on that. Other than that, I don't really have any additional report on the, the Recreation and Parks.
All right, thank you. We'll move on now to council comments and discussion. If there's anything else that didn't come under a committee report that anybody would like to, to bring to the table, we'll just go down the list here. We'll start metaphorically with one end of the table there, Mr. Deha. Anything else you'd like to add tonight?
Mr. President, I wonder if we may need to look at, I, I completely support the ban on plastic bags, but under, and, and maybe we need to defer to Mr. Yingling on this a little bit. I completely support the ban on plastic bags, but I wonder if July 1st might be not the best time to implement that ban. And I, I think I would like to encourage some discussion among us, and, you know, I'll look forward to whatever decision that we make, but I think that we ought to, I think that we ought to have that, I think that we ought to have that discussion. I think, I was kind of hoping that we've discussed how busy it is that, that, that some of the other departments are in the city. We, we also have some folks that are home. I was hoping that we could not lose track of some of the other initiatives that we've discussed in the past, and maybe if, if it's the consent of, of, the consensus of the council, or, or we could talk about taking a look at, at some of these other initiatives that we've had in the past, such as the, the programmable signs, not the electric signs, but the programmable signs for some business owners and some church folks in town that would like to change out their static signs. They want to be able to change their signs sitting at their computer, say, for example, the sermon this week will be. And I, I think that's, I, I think, I think that would keep the city of Westminster on the cutting edge as far as things economically. We've talked about LED lights. The, the mayor's done a, a good bit of work on that, I understand, and we've talked about license plate readers and cameras. Hopefully, that's moving forward. We continue to have problems with nuisance properties. We've had more problems just recently with folks that have, have generated a lot of calls for service. I would like for us to, to update our rental inspection ordinance and, and take another good look at that. At, at some point in time, the, the public health emergency will be over, and we need to move things forward. The same with the, the Wakefield Valley cleanup and doing some planning out there, and then also research. We need some new parking meters downtown. So maybe we could, maybe we, we could think about that a little bit on the back channel as we're trying to, to keep things going. And I, I want to echo the remarks of Mr. Yingling, and I want to echo the remarks of, of, of Mr. Cavaci. I think a lot of people have really come together and, and have done a really, a really good job with all of this. I believe that's it, Mr. President. Thank you for all the time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Deha. Ms. Gilbert?
Yes, I have, I have something. As, as many people are aware, I am a social worker by my, by my day job, and in light of the pandemic, it has come to my attention that a lot of the local food pantries have closed. So on Easter Sunday evening and Monday morning, I took it upon myself to make several calls and contacted Pastor Martha of Grace Lutheran Church. I talked with Brooke from the Food Chick and several other people, and Grace Lutheran Church has embraced the idea of starting a temporary food pantry in the city of Westminster. So we will be starting that as of Friday. Friday will be the first day of, of food drop-off. So I have the entire schedule. Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays from 10:00 to 2:00 will be, will be a drop-off for the food pantry. It'll be kind of a fill the, fill the cat's bus because CTS is also in partnership with this. And then on Thursday and Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00 will be, will be the pickup so that anyone in our community of all Carroll County can come by and get what will be bagged items for, for groceries. They will be canned goods, dry goods, fresh produce. I have had a huge response from Hans of Westminster, local farmers, numerous citizens, shepherd staff. There is, just within the last 12 to 24 hours, the whole idea has just ballooned. This is not a city-sponsored activity, but I'm kind of using this as, as information, given the fact that we are in a pandemic and there are a lot of people out there that are having trouble getting food and obtaining food because they cannot leave their homes or they don't have the funds to do so. So I just want to put that out there and make people aware that the city of Westminster at Grace Lutheran Church will now have a temporary food, food pantry in town. And I will, any, anybody who would like to volunteer, please try to contact me via email or phone if you know my phone number.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Mr. Cavaci, anything you'd like to add?
Negative, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Yingling. Are you muted? Do you have something?
Nothing for me, Mr. President.
Great, thank you very much. All right, so now we will move on to bids. We have two bids on the agenda tonight. The first is the sole source procurement, the hypo. Glass, would you like to discuss that more?
Yes, sir. Currently, the city uses chlorine in a bulk liquid form, and that's, of course, for disinfection of the filtered water at our, not only our cranberry plant, but all of our sources. This material is a concentrated bleach solution. It's kind of an industrial grade. It's about 12%, where the normal bleach you would purchase is in the 2.5% range. So it's much more potent than what, just to call it bleach. But this was actually a change from the gas chlorination that we used some years ago. There were some process safety standards that were promulgated in the United States related to other gas uses, but chlorine gas was one of those, and that was because of the Union Carbide disaster that maybe people will recall from Bhopal, India, when it was a whole lot of people were killed there. But anyway, the, the 12% hypochlorate, while it is not a gas and it's, it doesn't carry that deadly effect, there are still some drawbacks to its use. The material is caustic in nature, very aggressive, and is unpleasant enough to cause blindness and, and damage to skin. So clearly would require some extensive personal protective equipment for handling. Other issues are that it loses potency over time and due to off-gassing of chlorine. So what you buy at 12%, you might actually use at 9% by the time it, it sets long enough. Then the last issue, of course, is the, its potential availability issues during times of crisis. And while we haven't had that yet, I can tell you that we certainly had contingent plans to, because the wastewater treatment plant has to use hypochlorate as well, we certainly had contingent plans to, to move the hypochlorate from the wastewater plant to the water plant so that we could maintain operations at the water plant in the event that that did happen. So far, that's not been the case. So there's an alternative to the, to the bulk purchase, and that is to generate the solution on site. The equipment to do that utilizes water, electricity, and, and table salt, and it produces this hypochlorate solution that's much weaker, which is not, sounds like would be a problem, but it's not. You just use more of it to, to use the same overall pounds. But the off-gassing issues with the, with the weaker solution is, is very reduced under those conditions, and, and the solution is more stable, less hazardous to handle, et cetera, et cetera. Also, the availability of the reagents, we clearly have the water, the electricity, we have a diesel generator in the event that the, the power would be out, and, and salt is, is very plentiful and has a infinite shelf life as well. So until recently, there were two manufacturers to, to make these on-site hypochlorate generators. Denora, the parent company of, and the original owner of the Myak system, the one we're talking about now, recently purchased the other manufacturer that was called, named Clartech. I expect for business market advantages. So at this time, there's really only one supplier that exists for the on-site generation equipment. The budget for the, for the project was $100,000, and the attached proposal in the amount of $60,850 is for the purchase of the, the equipment only. The remainder is for the materials and, and appurtenances that go along with the installation. We do plan to install that equipment ourselves, and, and there will probably be money turned back out of that $100,000 budget. So at this point, staff would recommend the mayor and council approve the sole source procurement for the Denora on-site generator. It's a Myak 60, and accept the proposal of Kersner Environmental on the amount of $60,850. And if, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer this.
Mr. President?
Last, is, let's, let's get this on the floor properly. Is there a motion to approve the bid?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second from Mr. Deha, right. Mr. Cavaci?
So, Mr. Glass, it, it's a little, little bit under $100,000 to buy it and install it. So, Mr. Glass, it's a little, little bit under $100,000 to buy it and install it. How will this compare cost-wise? Obviously, the water is pretty inexpensive, and I believe salt is pretty cheap, too. Electricity's not, not real cheap. How, have you done any analysis in terms of what we pay currently for the bulk hypochloride versus what the ongoing cost is going to be to generate it ourselves over, you know, a long, long period of time?
Yes, sir. Basically, how that shakes out is the cost of transport is, is pretty much what you would, what you would save. And I know that doesn't sound like a lot, but when compared to the, the safety aspects of it, it's, it would, even if it weren't a cost savings, I would still recommend to, to use the on-site generation stuff. Doesn't mean we can't continue. If something went wrong, that we couldn't still use the, buy the bulk, we'll still have the equipment and the tankage to be able to do that. But as far as savings go, you know, again, I said it was, it was 12% material, that means it's 88% water. Hole in the water is really the, that's the cost savings that, that you wouldn't have to do. The electricity and et cetera is the, is where the money's spent there. Like you said, salt's pretty cheap as well.
So net-net, this, if anything, is going to save us a little money, but certainly not going to cost us more, other than this capital cost that we need to sink into it?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kavachi. Any further comments? Anyone else wish to be heard? Right, are you ready for the vote then?
All the way.
Right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the bid is approved. Next contract is for Executive Searcher, Ms. Matthews.
Thank you. As the mayor and council are aware, our Director of Finance and Administrative Services, Ms. Palmer, will be assuming the new role of Special Projects Manager out of my office in the coming fiscal year. She will be continuing in her current position until such time as the city hires a new Director of Finance. In addition, our Director of Human Resources, Ms. Childs, has conveyed to me her interest in possibly retiring later this calendar year. Due to the comprehensive nature of a recruitment process for an executive level position such as these two director positions, and the associated internal resources that are required to conduct the recruitment, Ms. Childs and I have discussed it and recommend that the city retain the services of an executive search firm to conduct the recruitments for these pending vacancies. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Childs to sort of walk through the procurement process we followed and what our recommendation is.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Good evening. Although the procurement of professional services does not require competitive bid process, staff elected to issue a request for proposals for executive search services in order to obtain competitive pricing. Staff received proposals from two highly qualified firms, the Novak Consulting Group and Gov. HR USA. The maximum cost for each recruitment was $22,300 for Novak and $24,000 for Gov. HR. Staff reviewed both proposals and determined that the Novak proposal best meets the city's needs. The Novak Consulting Group has provided management consulting services to local governments and nonprofit organizations since 1993, and has completed over 160 searches. Novak provided an approximate timeline of 90 days to conduct each recruitment from the time of contract execution. Funding, following a contract award by the mayor and common council, funding will be allocated through the budget amendment process, and staff recommends that the city award a contract to the Novak Consulting Group, not to exceed amount of $44,600 for executive search services for two recruitment processes. Thank you.
I'll move to approve the contract award, Mr. President.
Motion to approve, and a second from Mr. Kavachi, and a second from Mr. Yingli. Any further discussion? Right, hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the contract is awarded. There's no unfinished business, unfinished business, annual review of the automated enforcement program. Chief Lovebuck?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. So March is the month that we do our annual review of the automated enforcement program, specifically the sole remaining red light automated camera, which is Site 505, located on southbound Malcolm Drive, for the through lanes at Nursery Road. And I did provide the report in the council packet, and if you refer to the table on page two, you can look at the years 1 through 10 that we've run the program and, and see that from years seven through 10, we've had a significant decline in the number of citations issued, which is a good thing because it means that less people are running the red light at that location. So we are now down to approximately 2.3 citations per day. Additionally, I did receive an email from our vendor representative who advised that post-governor's executive order, the amount of traffic has obviously decreased. So for the months that this executive order is in place, we're seeing a significantly less amount of traffic at that location. So we should have an additional decline in the, in the months affected by that. We continue to see a low amount of crashes compared to the three years prior to the system being put into place. The program is violator-funded, and we are still above our break-even point for the program to not operate at a deficit. I am concerned if we continue on this trend and with the months ahead under the executive order, that it will probably be running at a deficit for those months. As I've expressed in last year's report, and I've, and I've also concluded this year's report, I think that the thing that we ought to consider most is the opportunity cost that we're, that's in place to run this program for the, the single remaining site. And what I mean by that is that an officer has to daily go through the system and review all of the potential violations that are forwarded from the vendor. They have to be vetted through a number of criteria, which can be fairly time-consuming. And in addition to that, a natural result of this program is that we field a lot of questions, a lot of people calling to sometimes just ask, you know, for clarification, sometimes to argue a point. And typically, those questions are fielded by the officer who does the review. Sometimes it goes up through the chain of command, through the deputy chief, depending on the nature of the call. In addition to that, we have the dockets when the violators ask for a day in court. Additionally, we also are involved in payment reception and processing, and that takes place typically with our front office staff, the dispatchers, and Traffic Enforcement Officer Leonie, and sometimes at 56 West Main Street. So I think the mayor and council should probably take a look at that opportunity cost with the sole remaining camera. I'm not opposed to terminating the automated enforcement program based on that issue. I feel as if we had a more comprehensive program, and we were spending this amount of time on it, it might be, in my opinion, worth our effort. I'm not sure that it is at this point for the sole remaining site, and due to the fact that it seems like it's done its job, that we're getting an increased amount of traffic compliance in that particular direction. So that's the, the summary of the report. There's a lot of statistics and a lot of information on number citations issued, how that breaks down into what the gross revenue generated, the vendor fees, payment to Howard County Regional Automated Enforcement Center, and then also internal program costs, which is an estimate of what our staff spends processing the violations. So that concludes my report, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Mr. President?
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Kavachi?
So, Mr. President, I know not everyone has been on the council the entire time that this program has been in place, and actually, it even predates me by a couple of years, but I've been pretty paying close attention to this since I got on the council. And each year, we were, as, we had five sites to start with, and the whole impetus of implementing this program had nothing to do with money, and it had everything to do with safety. And the whole point of having these cameras put in place was to reduce the amount of accidents at these intersections, in particular, accidents that created injuries, mostly T-bone type accidents or severe rear-end accidents, things like that. And as time went on, each site became less and less productive in terms of its, its reduction. Each of them reduced the number of accidents with injuries pretty significantly. And then over time, the public, I guess, be, for whatever reasons, and partially probably because of the cameras, over time, those, those accidents dwindled and dwindled to the point where they became at a level that was at or below a sustainable level, both financially, as well as below a level that any other intersection might have that didn't have those cameras. So over time, systematically, each of those cameras was taken offline. This was the one remaining intersection for quite a number of years now that remained because the accident level did stay above where it really should have been, in particular injury accidents. I think, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but really what we're seeing now is that's no longer the case. This, this intersection is, is not producing that level of, of accidents with injuries. And I think at this point, e- even though it still probably produces slight positive revenue, it's probably going to turn negative soon, and at the same time, not create a safer environment at that intersection. So I think it probably, that coupled with the fact that it's taking staff time, valuable staff time away from things that they could be doing otherwise, I'd recommend that we go ahead and, and remove this final camera. There's nothing stopping us in the future, if we feel like things change, from reinstituting this program down the road. If we see an uptick in, in any of these intersections, not just this one, but others, you know, we can always revisit that. But I think at this point in time, I would recommend that we go ahead and discontinue this last camera. Mr. President?
All right, thank you. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
So I, I think I have the same, same mindset as Tony in general. I don't think these things should be looked at as revenue generators. Obviously, if we're losing a bunch of money on them, we have to consider that. You know, our resources could go to, to somewhere better. The one thing that I would like to see before, before we make a decision is, because what Councilman Kavachi said is, if, if there's an uptick in accidents, we can always bring them back. So we always have that option. I would prefer to not have an uptick in accidents, though. If, if, if we have the data, or could get the data, of some of the other, some of the other red lights, cameras that we've had in the past, when, when, you know, when those accident counts or accidents with injuries went down, do we have any data available to see what happened when the cameras removed, and to see if there was an uptick? I mean, I think, I think the only reason to have these is the safety of the public. We got to remember, you know, the number, the number one cause of death between the ages of 140 or 45 is, are accidents. And most of all, there's are automobile accidents. So I think, I think we should be careful about this. I, I have a feeling we're, I think the data will probably show, we should probably remove the camera. But I, I would like to see that, if that's something we can, we can, we can pull and, and take a look at. That's it, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyone else?
Mr. President?
Mr. Kavachi?
Just in response to the mayor's comment, I think that's an excellent idea. I do believe we have looked at some of those other intersections throughout that time period where we were taking cameras offline, and they were consistently staying down. But I, I, I believe, number one, we can get it. Chief, I, we can get that information correct?
Absolutely. We, we don't capture it as, as a matter of this program anymore, but the, the information is available to us, and it's something that we could definitely provide.
Right. I, I think it's an excellent idea, Mr. Mayor. We should take a peek at that, and, and then we can make that decision. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kavachi. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Mr. President?
Right, Mr. Dayhoff?
So if I'm understanding, Councilmember Kavachi, well, you want to, you want to put it, Mr. Kavachi, you want to put it off to the next meeting?
Yeah, I think, I think we can have the information put together by, by then. Is that accurate, Chief?
Absolutely.
All right, you're good. Then we'll bring this back for the next meeting. We have the additional data from the police department. Is that acceptable, everybody?
Yeah.
Very good. Mr. President?
Mr. Dayhoff?
Yeah, that, that would be okay with me. I, I'm not particularly a fan of this program. I think that the way things have evolved, I think we would have much better success with license plate readers and, and other static cameras and things like that. But I'm perfectly willing, until we see that data that the mayor called to our attention, and that Mr. Kavachi called to our attention, I'm perfectly, we, we can wait. It's been, program's been there for, for 10 years. Another two weeks is, is not going to matter one way or another.
13, actually.
Okay, gotcha.
And, and just to be clear, I don't, like, I say we put it on the agenda for next meeting so that doesn't get lost in anything else. I don't want to put it off, but I, I just want to be careful. If, you know, if, if what we're doing is saving injury and lives, I just want to be sure of that. I have a feeling, and, and there could be some lag. I mean, look, we, we all know that those intersections, they get reputations for having, for having those. You know, it might take a year or two, but if we see it creep back, I would just like to know what, what the total cost is, not just money, of having them and not having them. That's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next item on the agenda of the new business is approval of Warner Construction contract, change order number two. Ms. Matthews?
Thank you. Change order number two is comprised of two component parts. The first are revisions to an electrical current transformer cabinet. This change is the result of work required by BGE, which was not released or completed until after the city's award of the contract to Warner Construction. Because the exact nature of the required electrical cabinet work was not available, it could not be included in the bid documents. The associated cost of this item is $38,719.65. The second component of this change order is actually a contract credit. Door number 219 was incorporated in the plans at the request of former Chief, Chief of Police Spalding. He had requested the door as an additional security measure. As the plans developed and were finalized, this door actually became superfluous, as the door to the second floor rear stairs actually gained a proxy card reader. The project architect recently notified me that they had caught this error, and thankfully, it had not yet been ordered. So the associated contract credit is, would be in the amount of $1,672.56, resulting in a net change order cost for change order number two of $37,047.09. So staff recommends that the city authorize Warner Construction to make these two changes, and also authorize the mayor's execution of the associated change order number two.
All right, thank you, Ms. Matthews. You've heard the report. May I have a motion on approval of the, approval of the change order?
Removes. Second.
A motion to approve the change order, and Mr. Dayhoff, and a second from Mr. Kavachi. Is there any further discussion or questions? Right, hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor of approving the contract change order, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the contract is approved. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the contract is approved. And now it's time for departmental reports, and for those tuning in, this is when, uh, the mayor and council hear from the, uh, city administrator and all the department heads on, uh, reports from their departments. Ms. Matthews, would you like to lead us off?
Thank you. Um, I wanted to share with the mayor and common council that I had a conference call with Katz and Associates on April second. As you all know, Katz and Associates is the communications firm hired by the city to assist us with our water reuse initiative. The focus of our call on April second was to discuss the results of the stakeholder interviews that were held in late January and early February. Um, Katz informed me that they are incorporating the feedback from the stakeholder interviews into the draft communication plan, which was one of the tasks that we contracted with the firm for, and I anticipate receiving the draft communication plan in approximately thirty days. Um, so we are managing to make some progress beyond, uh, COVID-nineteen measures. Um, also wanted to provide, uh, the group with an update on the forty-five West Main renovation project. As I've mentioned before, we hold, uh, bi-weekly progress meetings, which are now obviously being held virtually. Our most recent progress meeting was held on Tuesday, April seventh. Warner Construction, um, indicated during that call that they were about two to three weeks behind schedule a- as of that date. Um, they have been managing to make pretty good progress despite the pandemic, um, but one of the complications they've run into is that their original steel manufacturer, um, was shut down, um, due to the pandemic, but they have identified another supplier. Um, Warner also has encountered some issues with its, uh, windows manufacturer. Um, I think Mr. Glass would likely agree with me. We've been very impressed with the firm, and I do believe them when they say that they're looking for ways to make up time. Um, so we're not significantly behind. Um, I did just wanna keep you posted on that project. Um, also wanted to share with you, uh, this evening, that I've been working with Brooke Hagerty, um, who, as you know, is the manager of the downtown Westminster Farmers Market. Um, obviously in the light of the pandemic, she and I have been having a number of discussions about, um, how to proceed with the market opening, and have also consulted with, uh, the mayor and council president on this matter. Farmers markets are allowed to operate under Governor Hogan's executive order. Um, they are considered an important source of fresh food during this, uh, difficult time. As of now, the market, um, will open on schedule on Saturday, May sixteenth. Obviously, that could, that timeline could be knocked off course if we are seeing a rising number of, uh, COVID-nineteen cases, or if the governor issues any subsequent executive orders. I did wanna take this opportunity to compliment Ms. Hagerty. She has done a phenomenal job of developing a plan to protect both vendors and shoppers once the market opens. Some of the, uh, measures that she plans to put in place is limiting the number of market shoppers at any one time. Uh, she's put together a plan to reconfigure the market layout so that all vendors will be ten feet apart, um, and she will be requiring all market vendors to wear face coverings. Um, she's also committed to, um, kind of doing a communications, uh, plan to encourage market shoppers to also wear face covering for their own protection, as well as those of our vendors. Um, and lastly, I wanted to provide an update on the Stocksville redevelopment project. Um, Partners for Economic Solutions, which is the firm that is providing technical assistance to the city, and their subconsultant, Major Consulting, um, have completed the preliminary site characterization report. Um, this report incorporates a number of items, including, um, a review of background site information, kind of an assessment of baseline market conditions, and some preliminary financial evaluation of potential reuse options for the property. Um, Partners for Economic Solutions indicated that I should receive the preliminary site characterization report, um, sometime next week, and I will, um, share that with the members of the Economic Development Committee upon receipt. One of the things that, uh, PES did note is that, not surprisingly, the COVID-nineteen pandemic has shifted market conditions and future development potentials significantly. Um, their initial outreach to the development community, um, indicated some unwillingness to review new opportunities, given all the uncertainty and financial challenges that many companies are facing right now. Um, they've made some recommendations to me regarding our next steps and the timeline for those that I'll be sharing with the Economic Development Committee later this week. So that concludes my own report, unless there's any questions from the mayor and common council about any of those items.
Any questions for Ms. Matthews?
Mr. President?
Mr. Mayor?
More of a comment, and I, I did mention this to, uh, to both, uh, you and, uh, Ms. Peckera and, and you, Ms. Matthews. I did, um, I did look into some stuff, um, that other farmers markets are doing, and I'm gonna send it over to Brooke. I know, I know Brooke well, I'm gonna send it over to her. This isn't something that we're gonna, um, we would require, but something that we strongly suggest is, um, bundling of goods at the farmer's market. So instead of people going in and kind of piecemealing it, offering bundles, or at least as an option, if not as the, uh, the only option, um, other farmer's markets are doing it. It just, it just, uh, there, there's less handling of goods, there's, um, people are spending less time there. Uh, you see, you see other localities doing it, uh, I think we're all familiar with, uh, local homestead, uh, products, uh, New Windsor, they, um, they do, you know, weekly bundle for, it's very, very popular, um, and it, it just, it'll, it'll cut down time that people are around each other during the farmers, you know, the farmer's market hours and the, the interaction. So not something I, I, I'm suggesting that we have them do, it's just something that we suggest that they do and we can help promote through the city. Um, I think it'd be a good way to, to cut back on some of the, some of the negative aspects of having, of having that available. So that's just, you know, that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you, Mayor Dominic. I did wanna mention, I did forward, um, that suggestion, um, to Ms. Hagerty, and I noted in the communication she sent out to our market vendors that she did, um, pass that along and encourage them to find ways to incorporate that suggestion into their business practice. So thank you for that. Um, next up is, uh, Councilmember DeHaas, who will provide the report on behalf of the Westminster Volunteer Fire Department.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Um, due to the, um, increased, um, calls for service and the complexities of, of, uh, going out to the calls for service because of the, uh, the public health emergency, we've, um, assigned a seventh first responder on each and every shift in order to, um, make sure that we're running three medic units. Um, as, as, I'll go over some of the numbers here in a moment, but, um, our numbers have increased as a result of, um, I guess, the, the public health emergency. Um, we're also, like many emergency, uh, responders, we're having problems, uh, maintaining supplies, uh, for personal protection equipment, disposable masks, N-ninety-five masks, isolation gowns, uh, disinfectants, hand sanitizers, um, and such. So, um, if anyone out there, um, has some of these items to donate, um, if they could contact the EMS captain, Laura Tyler, at the Westminster, uh, department, and that, that number is four-ten-eight-four-eight-one-eight-zero-five, no, zero-one, eight-four-eight-eighteen-zero-one, and press option number five to make arrangements to drop off, um, uh, some of those items. Um, our total calls for the month, if, if, I sent this report out to everyone, there's a typo there. Our total calls for the month of March, um, are, um, uh, it looks like five hundred and eighteen calls, uh, EMS were four hundred and forty-four, fire calls were seventy-four, uh, three hundred and seven of the calls were in the city limits, a hundred and ninety-three were outside the city limits. The number of overlapping calls, those are the calls in which our, our medic units are engaged, um, and we need to call in New Windsor or Pleasant Valley or Reese, which does an excellent job. Um, they, they're still running at fifty-three percent. Over half the time that you call for a medic unit from the city of Westminster, um, we have to bring in New Windsor or Pleasant Valley or Reese, uh, to take care of that call. Um, that looks like that completes our report. Thank you, Ms. Matthews.
Thank you, Councilmember DeHaas. Uh, next up is our Chief of Police, uh, Chief Ledwell.
Yes, good evening. To follow up on, uh, what Councilman Cavaci, uh, uh, touched on earlier with the officer-involved shooting, um, we still have several steps, uh, to go through to, uh, before we'll be able to reassign the officers to operational duties, so anticipate that taking approximately another ten days. Um, fortunately, the, uh, Carroll County Sheriff has, um, partnered with us to fill in the gaps on the patrol squad created by the reassignment of those officers to administrative duties. So, um, I don't anticipate any issues, uh, between now and then, but there, it will take a little bit of time before we can get them reassigned. Um, additionally, the Maryland State Police have agreed to take on the, uh, concurrent internal investigation. Uh, we always wanna, uh, look at our practices and, and, uh, do an after-action critique, and, and part of that is doing a, an internal investigation and, um, actually, uh, legitimately worked out better for, uh, the state police to, uh, do both of them, 'cause they can share information, uh, between the two investigations much easier than if it had been split between two agencies. So that will also occur. Um, we have, uh, completed the public assistance reimbursement, uh, FEMA, uh, grant portical requirements, and we're currently tracking COVID-nineteen-related, uh, city expenses, uh, for potential reimbursement down the road through FEMA. So that's underway. Uh, we continue to adjust to the amendments to the executive order from the governor and to, uh, work with, uh, everyone to ensure compliance. We have had several charges for, uh, EO, uh, violations. Typically, they're, uh, um, paired with other criminal charges that were primary, um, but we have had a few. Um, we have used, we've taken up the, the sheriff's department on their offer to use, they've got a decon site set up for our officers who believe they potentially were in situations that could, um, expose them to the COVID-nineteen. So, uh, that's worked out very well. The logistics of that site are, are, are really good. We've also got a, a disinfectant fogger that we're using in the, uh, police cruisers. Um, doesn't take, it takes about ten minutes to, to do the defogging, uh, the, the fogging process with the disinfectant, so that seems to be working very well. Um, our calls for service are down some, uh, seem to be increasing a little bit over the, the last few days. Um, as Councilman Cavaci, uh, touched upon earlier, uh, number of, uh, part one offenses, as well as total crimes are lower, uh, compared to twenty-nineteen at this point. Um, our four police cr- recruits are back in action at the police academy. They're doing teleworking, uh, for the time being, and we've been told that the potential graduation date, which is in the first week of August, is still a target date for graduation. So that's a good thing, we're headed in the right direction with that. Uh, we're continuing to assist with things such as the, uh, medical respiratory site, uh, security checks, and some of our food distribution site security checks within, uh, the city of Westminster. Um, and I believe that's all I have. Thank you.
Hi, um, Ms. Palmer, our Director of Finance and Administrative Services.
Good evening. I have nothing to add this evening.
Okay. Um, Ms. Childs, our Director of Human Resources.
Hello. Um, HR staff has been handling business as usual to the best of our ability. I believe it's going really well. Um, I fully expected that we would have some extra time, like teleworking, to get some projects that are pending done, but to date, we've been very busy with the normal task and addressing new issues that are coming up every day. Uh, HR analyst Brenda Anderson and I have been working to learn the new regulations issued as a result of COVID-nineteen, and we've both taken numerous webinars to keep up with the guidelines, um, that are being updated each day. Um, and that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Ms. Allen Ceecey, our Director of Housing Services.
Okay, doesn't one of my... Hello?
Uh, yeah, go ahead, Cindy.
Oh, I, good evening. I just wanted to share with you the most recent, um, there is a PIH notice, um, it's twenty-twenty-dash-zero-five. Um, it's about sixty-three pages, but it, um, it does cover every aspect of the housing choice voucher program and all of the changes, modifications, temporary, I should say, temporary modifications that, um, that HUD has put in place to help us, um, better administer the program. And that's available on the, the HUD's website, if anybody's interested in that. It's notice PIH twenty-twenty-dash-zero-five. They also had a, um, a webinar, and that's also available, too, that was, um, taped, and it's the covid@HUD.gov, PIH, covid@HUD.gov, and, um, they just, uh, a lot of information into the stimulus, um, funding and waivers, um, for everything, including, um, most recently will be coming up is the, our, um, annual and five-year plan that would be coming up. Um, if we, uh, can't make that deadline, there will be a waiver for that. So, um, just a lot of information out there, if anyone's interested in, that's available on the HUD.gov website, and that's everything.
Thank you, Ms. Allen Ceecey. Mr. Glass?
Yes, ma'am, just a, a few items. Um, the first one is with regard to the annual paving project. We have two crews that are operating right now. Um, the first one is on Winter Street heading east, and they're, uh, in the Dutter Park area as we speak. The second crew is, um, in the Furnace Hills area at, uh, Crossbridge Drive, um, and, uh, and Marhill. Marhill's complete, and they have probably, um, the rest of the week to finish, uh, Crossbridge, then that crew will be, um, demobilizing because, uh, we're reaching the end of our funds, and we don't wanna have two crews working at the same time and, uh, run into problems with, uh, um, with going over. So we'll be back to one crew, and that's the one at, uh, um, Winter Street then. Um, today also, I received a draft proposal from the University of Maryland, um, with regard to our modeling for our reservoir, as was required by, um, the Department of the Environment, and this is all part of our water reuse project. Um, the, the, um, the worry is, um, if, if we, if we use the reuse water, uh, to supplement the reservoir, that there is a, a possibility of some utrification to take place. Uh, this modeling, um, and they do this in the, on the East Coast all the time, but, um, uh, this modeling would then, um, help to determine the severity of that, um, of, of that, um, mutrification process, or if it would occur at all. So, uh, while there were no, uh, dollar amounts associated with it, it, um, I'm almost afraid to ask what that's gonna cost. It's, it's, uh, gonna be a lot of effort, so. Um, with regard to the E and R project, um, two things there. You'll recall, um, a few weeks ago, we had a, uh, a change order for the electric service, um, as a result of some changes with BG and E. Um, I'm happy to report that, uh, the directional drill work for that is, uh, is complete, and, um, and as a result of, of their following our, uh, our lead on an alternative there, the cost was seventy-five-hundred dollars, where the, uh, the contractor, the change order from the contractor was gonna be eighty-thousand dollars. So that was, uh, considerable savings by, uh, by following our, uh, our own alternative. Then the last thing with the E and R project is, uh, that the electricians, everyone else is, is, is working, but the electricians have elected to, uh, to shut down until, uh, till we, the virus peaks in this area. So, um, we're hoping that's only gonna be for, again, a few weeks, and then they'll, they'll be back to work after that, but, uh, for, uh, their own safety reasons, they elected to pull off the job site. So, um, that's all I have, unless there are questions.
Mr. President? Mr. Glass, um, related to the study in terms of the, uh, nutrification of the reservoir, um, potentially being a problem for our water reuse program, are they going to take into a, the, the whole reason we're spending sixty-five million dollars, or whatever it is, on this enhanced nutrient, or to lower the, the enhanced nutrient level out of our, our water, wastewater treatment plant? Um, are they gonna take that into consideration when they look at those numbers? Because the levels that we're putting out now, I believe are higher than what they will be once that plant is complete. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir, that is accurate. There will, certainly will be a reduction, and, um, so, um, what... There will, certainly will be a reduction, and so what the Department of the Environment has requested is, no matter what that reduction is, whatever it's reduced to, that would be the input that would go into this, this modeling effort. Because nutrification obviously is not, that's not something that, that we want in any water way, but they don't want to be, they do want to be for sure that that's not promoted in this effort.
Do we know what those levels are going to be once the plant's completed?
So the limits of technology for nitrogen and phosphorus are three milligrams per liter for nitrogen and .3 for, for phosphorus. So that's pretty much as good as you can get, unless, you know, we're talking about space shuttle kinds of, of technologies, but that's, that's about what it's going to be, is 3 and .3.
What are we at now, about five?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President, that's all I have.
Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Cavaci. Ms. Gilbert?
Um, this, this, Mr. Glass, this, this is a question not related to anything that you just reported on, but Andrew, the replacement of the retaining wall at the Diffin Dollar Lot, it was supposed to be completed, if I'm not mistaken, during this budget year. Has COVID-19 kind of altered that, that, that project? Will we be seeing a change that we might have to take that into the next budget year? Or do you foresee that still being on time and, and completed?
So at, at this point, I'm, I don't think it's related to the virus at all, but I, I think we are at the point where the documents are, are ready for legal review, and, but even if that were to occur today, or last week, I, I don't think that project can be complete by June 30.
Okay. All right. Are, is, is COVID-19 going to be affecting any of the other projects that we've kind of voted on or, or in the works at this point? Is it affecting anything seriously, like maybe the drain realignment project or anything else that, that we are intending on working on in a particular amount of time or timeframe? Even the sewer line at Spring Mill and, and anything like, any of those projects? Are, are we behind on that because of this, or what will be the fallout?
So I don't think I could blame that, on any of that, on the, on the COVID process. There are a number of projects that, well, so let's go to the projects that will be complete. The, the annual paving will be complete, and we're in the process right now of, well, recently have, have signed the documentation for the Carroll Arts project, and, and that HVAC equipment has been ordered, but it has a rather long lead time, so, so I'm hoping that project is complete by, by June 30. Certainly, we're going to hear from the users of the facility if, if it's not, because this is about air conditioning. But there are a number of projects that, that have been pushed forward, in some cases, like the, the parking garage work that, that seems to be in a potential legal problem, that's going to be pushed forward to next year and, and included with the parking garage, so that, you know, we may end up getting a better bang for a buck by doing that. The ADA sidewalk work is another one. None of that is, has been, has, has made it to procurement this year, and, but it may make sense for that to, to be included in next year's project, will have twice the size then, assuming we'll get the same funding, but, and I don't know if there, I may have forgotten some other projects, but, but the two that will be done are, are the, the annual paving and the Carroll Arts work.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else, Mr. Glass?
No, that's, that's it, unless there are other questions.
Okay. Next up is our Director of Community Planning and Development, Mr. Depot.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. On April 9th, the Planning and Zoning Commission did approve two sign applications, both for Heritage Honda. These were signs that exceeded the size limit for staff approval and required planning commission approval. We have advertised for an April 5th Border Zoning Appeals Meeting, I'm sorry, May 5th Border Zoning Appeals Meeting for the Valvoline Service Station. This is at 140 in Gorsuch. It's a, currently, I guess, a veterinarian clinic or office. And also, I wanted to point out that the Maryland Urban and Community Forest Committee of the Maryland Association of District Forestry Boards, in partnership with the Maryland Department of National, National Resources, Forest Service, is happy to present the city of Westminster with the Green People Living and Nurture and Trees Award for 2019. It's the plant award. This award is officially recognized, recognizes the city of Westminster's hard work in preplanting and care throughout 2019. And I want to thank Andrew Gray on staff for working with this application and this award. And that completes my report.
Mr. President?
Mr. Cavaci?
Mr. Depot, on the property located at Gorsuch and 140, I believe it used to be a veterinarian clinic right there. I, I know you might not be particularly familiar with it, but the ingress and egress in and out of that property is, is pretty challenging. So I, I hope that when we, when we take a look at that, we, we take a look at the, the flow in and out of there, and try to come up with the best solution that we can in terms of, you know, making it safe and usable, frankly, for the business. You know, they, obviously, they've got to make their own business decision in terms of, you know, whether it's good enough for them relative to being able to attract customers or not. But I do think that it's something we probably should take a look at, and make sure that we're doing the best job we can when it comes to egress and ingress and safety at that, at that entry point. Okay?
Thank you. We have reached out to the applicant with that concern. We did ask for a traffic study. They are going to provide, I believe, some level of review. They believe that the trips with the Valvoline should be equal to the veterinarian clinic. So again, we're just asking for that information. Hopefully have something with the Border Zoning Appeals Meeting.
Anything further, Mr. Depot?
No, I have nothing else, thank you.
Thank you. And last but certainly not least, our Assistant Recreation Director, Ms. Mullen dor.
Good evening. So I don't have much to report on. However, we are working to process our refunds for events as we are canceling, and we are noticing a bit of a delay on refunds, but we are working with the companies so that we can get those processed. And then we are continuing to plan for our summer and fall events, and staff is getting creative on how to integrate possibly virtual events for our month of July activities. And that is all that I have.
Thank you, Ms. Mullen dor. I think that concludes staff's reports unless there's any questions from the Mayor and Common Council.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Anybody have any other questions?
Mr. Counsel? Mr. President?
Mr. Dayhoff?
Ms. Matthews, I wonder if we could have a, a, a report from MAGIC in the future? I think they've been doing a lot of really good stuff, MAGIC Anting for that matter, in response to the, the COVID-19 public health emergency. I think they've done a good job. It would be good to, to hear a report from them in the future, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, we'll get that scheduled. They normally do report on a quarterly basis, Councilmember Dayhoff, and obviously, we've been knocked off a little bit of our normal schedule recently, but I will reach out to both of them, and we'll get that on our future agenda, working with the mayor and the council president. So thank you for bringing that up.
One other thing, Mr. President?
Mr. Dayhoff?
Anecdotally, I'm hearing in the community that there's been an uptick in domestic violence and child abuse cases that are out there. I wonder if, if the mayor would have any thoughts about that, maybe take a look at the programs that we have currently in place, or, or how they can be expanded or augmented to, to meet the current challenges? If that's okay with you, Mr. President?
I'm not sure if the mayor's prepared to respond off the, off the cuff, if he would like to, certainly.
Or the chief?
So this is something that I've actually, a, a family member of mine has worked for the House of Truth for a long time, and I, I talked to her about this very subject. It's something that's happening, obviously, all over the country, all over the world. You know, it's not something, I mean, typically, domestic violence is something that, there's education, there's outreach, but largely from a government perspective, you're, you're mostly, you know, you're, you're, you're reacting to, to things. I know there, there are programs in place, we have protocols in place, you know, that our, our police officers follow when they respond to something like that. You know, we can, we can have a discussion with the chief and see if there's anything we can do. My, you know, unfortunately, people are grouped up in houses together, not all of them get along, and not all of them treat, you know, treat each other well, and that's an unfortunate reality right now. If there's anything, you know, we can do as a municipality, I feel like we'd all be for it. I honestly feel like that's, that's, that's probably going to be fairly limited.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right. Move on now. We've concluded with departmental reports. This is normally the time of our meeting where we have citizen comments, and for those who have been following us on Facebook, I know some people have posted some comments there, please be sure that we will all take a look at those and, and follow those posts From the last meeting, we got one, one email, and I would note that if you look at, for those of you who can see the screen, look at the agenda. What we are doing now, in these times, we are inviting people to email our city clerk, Ms. Shannon Wiskowski, at, you know, you can see her email, you know, there on the screen. If you send her an email with any comments, we will be sure to add those to the record. The one comment we got from the last meeting was from Ms. Heather Cole, the owner of Molly's Cafe, and she says, hello, I hope everyone is healthy and well. I wanted to take just a moment to thank Councilman Tony Cavaci for his support and encouragement through all that has been going on. The talks are encouraging, and eating at our place helped. Thanks for always being such a great support to our business. Also, we would like to applaud the Fire Department and Police Department for all they have been dealing with. Great job. She concludes noting that she, we know she always has something to say. So that's the one comment we received from the last meeting. If anybody would like to share any thoughts with us in this meeting, please don't hesitate to send us that email, and we will share that with everybody at the next meeting. And unless anybody else has anything else to raise tonight, with that, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all very much for participating. Have a great week. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.